Message number one, what I would like to leave with you today is that unless we are able to concentrate on water and sanitation as the most important driver and elements of the SDGs, we will not reach that by 2030. By the way, we will not reach it as it stands now. Even before the Covid and the Russian aggression against Ukraine, it was pretty clear that we are off the track. And as governments invested resources into the Sustainable Development Goals, things will not be achieved. Basically, because things have changed dramatically over the past hundred years, particularly the past fifty years. Just to quote a few figures, in the twentieth century, the population growth was threefold, from two billion up to six billion. In the meantime, during the same period, water withdrawal has grown sixfold. So a sort of a seesaw opened that makes the whole thing sustainable. But what are the drivers that are causing this one? Of the many drivers for our discussion today, I would like to point out two. And this is a presentation basically covering the global scale, but you can go down and zoom down to the regional scale and even to the local scale. Of the many drivers, what we had over the past century, there are two most important drivers which change the shape of the game. First is the population growth, which I was referred to, threefold during the tenth century. Now we are seventy-seven billion. Exactly hundred years from now, by 2120, there will be twelve billion human beings, which represents the carrying capacity of the ecosystems of the world. If you are not able to change the current practices, including consumption patterns, then, sorry to say, and this is bad news number one, human civilization will start to decline dramatically. Ecosystem functions will switch off with all the consequences added to the concentration to urban centers. Seventy percent of humanity will be living in urban areas, which is a totally different ballgame, it's going to be. What to do about that? On top of all, we have this climate change, which is not anymore a hypothesis, but a proven fact. What can we do? And what are the most important drivers which will have an impact on our ecosystems, aquatic ecosystems particularly? Well, if you look at which are the important drivers, this guy is cool double. With today's population, we have reached a stage that half of the homo sapiens ever walking around on the earth are our contemporaries. This had to cause changes which were not seen in human history. The other impact, the other driver rather is, this is just a recent figure with the temperature anomalies which we observed over the past ten years. This cannot go on because our systems will collapse. What are the impacts of these two most important drivers, if you wish? First of all, what we have seen, ever since the Industrial Revolution, the carbon dioxide release into the atmosphere has grown exponentially. Ever since we have regular climatic observations, and that's not a long window, we have hundred and fifty years within which we have climate series, there is an increase of the temperature. As compared to the pre-industrial age today, we have averaged temperature higher by one point, by one centigrade. And if you reach the seven point six, then our systems will become unstable. And this is bad news number two, which I'm going to prove in a few moments. The political response to that was that let's curb the carbon dioxide or any greenhouse gas emissions into the atmosphere and try to stabilize the climate to the pre-industrial age. This is the Paris Agreement, which pushes governments to do that. The bad news is that it took humanity nearly three hundred years to screw up the environment, particularly the climate. It will not happen overnight. This is a long, long process. So the options what we have is obviously that of adaptation. We have the anthropogenic nitrogen fixation also growing exponentially. We have the nitrogen fluxes to coastal zones growing exponentially. We have the loss of tropical rainforests also exponential. We have the species extensions also exponential. So everything seems to be exponential, including the number of McDonald restaurants. So we are living in an exponentially changing world because of the Anthropocene. Some of the geological colleagues are arguing that Holocene is bye, less bye-bye because we have a new era where humanity was able to change the major fluxes that represent the functioning of the world. And as a natural result of it, we have reached in certain departments planetary boundaries. If we go beyond those, then our systems will collapse. An interesting paper published by Roxstrom and Company in The Nature has argued that when it comes to climate change and greenhouse gas releases to the atmosphere, we are beyond that limit, the planetary limit. This is the point of no return, how they claim it. So that's a very, very touch issue. We are in the same situation when it comes to biodiversity. When it comes to freshwater resources, however, they took a pretty relaxed view, saying that that was ten years ago. The water used at the time was two thousand five hundred cubic kilometers a year. However, if you look at the time series, how water withdrawal has increased, we come to the conclusion that in about five years' time, we reach the limit of four thousand, what Roxstrom and Company has set as a planetary limit. And from then on, our system starts to switch off. What we observe, and that has an enormous impact on arid lands and also on temperate zones. What we observe is a more frequent occurrence of the hydrological extremes, more floods on the one hand, and more droughts on the other end, keeping them out of order, the same as it has been twenty, well, ten thousand years ago, at the beginning of the Holocene. So that means that the hydrological cycle is accelerating because of the climate change, yielding an increased probability of both extremes. And that's a big challenge for the policymaking, how to adapt to that thing, what sort of mechanisms we have? Do we have only structural means? Or we do work together with nature and not against it? This is a paradigm change that basically happened over the past thirty years. Because what we see is really pretty much devastating in France some three, four years ago. In one day, the seven-month precipitation fell off, causing flash floods which were never experienced. And France has one of the most advanced flood management, including hydrological forecasting systems, in Europe. People died. I mean, for the French, this is just not acceptable. Or if you look at, not even a year ago, what happened in the western part of Germany as a result of cyclone burnt. Even today, in some villages, there is no electricity over there. Or two hundred kilometers to the west in Belgium, never observed urban flooding. Or in Italy, a flash flood. Or if you go a bit out of the European scene, the big flood on the Indus River knocked out the economy of Pakistan for nearly four years, forty billion US dollar damage. Then if you go to other parts of Asia, flash floods in India are coming up with an increasing frequency. So what do you do with that? And yet there are some who, well, are a bit skeptical about the climate change. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a religious question, this is a fact. Particularly if you look at the statistics of the past hundred years of the major natural disasters, ninety percent of the disasters are caused by water, whether it's flood or drought. But drought is the biggest killer. How do you deal with that? How do you make ecosystem services work in that situation? From whatever direction we look at it, the conclusion is that age-old hypothesis upon which engineering structures have been designed, namely that of stationarity, that the system will behave the same in the future and in the past, is not valid anymore. This is a big challenge for science. We have to change the approaches, there are new technologies from machine learning to artificial intelligence, all the way through, for instance, what happens in, I'm coming from the south of Warsaw, Budapest is the place where I live now. We observed that the hundred-year flood that statistically occurs once in a hundred years occurs now every twenty years. So something has changed dramatically. Thank you. Will we have more floods and droughts? Yes, we have. Not only impacting the human lives, but also ecosystems, particularly if you go beyond this point of no returns, then the ecosystem functions will be totally, totally different. First of all, in big rivers like the Danube, because of the melting of the glaciers, the flow will increase for a while and then it will decrease. That will have an enormous impact again on the ecosystems. If you go to the coastal systems, the sea level rise, which is due to heat expansion basically, plus melting water from Greenland and other areas, is already observable. And it's not excluded that by 2,300, there will be several meters increase. That is a low probability event, I have to say, at the same time. And I don't have too many good news, ladies and gentlemen, because this process will continue. Even if you look at the region where we are now, in Central Europe, in the optimistic scenario, in the Warsaw-Bulapest axis, the temperature will be increasing by two and a half degrees, which will already cause ecological and hydrological instabilities. But if you look at the pessimistic scenario for the last twenty years of the century, then a five degree centigrade increase, that will change the whole thing. Because we are indeed at a critical point, whether we continue or we try to stabilize how the system is behaving. At the end, all the climate change is all about water, and that's very important. That is very important. That is a message that we have to somehow be able to convey to the political community who, they don't understand this whole thing at all. Now, let me just go to the good news. We have heard that we need some adaptive systems and we need new strategies. But how to do that? There has been an incredible success in increasing the resilience of our systems, where the options are, either we go to where the water is, or we bring the water where we are. The adaptation options are numerous, from water governance all the way down to science-based decision support systems. The most important things, however, for our discussion for the coming two days is nature-based solutions. How do you do that? The Dutch have this system, more room for the rivers, and that's a very effective way of handling additional flows. Humanity needs more storage. That's exactly the problem, how we have to handle drought. And that's not an easy problem. The good news is that there has been an incredible progress over the past thirty years in science. We have twenty-three satellites going up there. Ten more seconds and none I will behave. We have twenty-three satellites up there that are, every single day are relaying one exabyte hydrologically relevant data, which is a billion gigabyte. That's a huge baby. Now, how do we handle that? When I was a student at the beginning of the Holocene, we had the problem of not having enough data. Now we have too many. How do you filter out the information? By using learning algorithms. New technologies offer new opportunities. We have integrated systems. We can even now measure groundwater fluctuation from the space. Integrated systems for flood management, big data algorithms are operating very, very fast. When I was a student under Professor, or rather, I did my thesis with him, Professor Zyslav Kachmarek, then we were, that was our daily prayer, keep the word linear and Gaussian distributed. Because then we could do all the mathematical tricks. But now, we can do almost anything with hydroinformatics as we have. Those days, as was fifty years ago, we had small-scale hydraulic models, because very complex flow phenomena. Then was a big deal to solve the Al-Sadi flow equations, which is now the minimum requirement in hydraulics. My students are able to compute three-dimensional velocity fields. So it's an incredible progress. The summary is that probably we need to retool our water management practices based on sciences. And the three most important messages I would like to leave you with is go for nature-based solutions, reinvigorate experimental catchments. Now, my students are computing flow up to the seventh digit. They have never measured flow, and they don't know that the precision in the best case is twenty percent. So experimental research has to be reinvigorated. And last but not least, combine the two and go digital. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andreas, very much for your very interesting introduction. Actually, the scenario is that we both churn out the session, so if you can join me. And we smoothly went to your lecture, which is very good. We are a bit beyond our time. But I think there is time for one, two questions from the audience, if you have to our speaker. It was not very optimistic though, so, but this is not the case. I am sure we will ask those questions when we finish the session, there will be plenty. But we are a bit beyond the timeframe. So may I ask the next speaker, who is Giuseppe Arduño? We already had a chance to introduce him very well at the...
Too excited, too excited, so.
So please, and now it is surreal because floor is yours.
Yeah, really mine. Thank you. Thank you very much, Andreas, also for the enlightening bad news that you gave us. No, I mean, it's clear the situation is what it is, but also you leave us the hope. And I think that ecohydrology can bring some hopes. And thank you also for the opportunity to present this preliminary study that is on ecohydrology, its history. And although officially entered in the IHP program in nineteen ninety-six, this preliminary study would like to understand how this concept was designed, was conceived, and how it became from a pure scientific research to a solution-oriented science that able to address our major today's challenges like environmental, societal, and educational need. So to do that, we need to go to understand what the IHP is. I think that everybody knows, but is maybe to recall it, is UNESCO's Intergovernmental Scientific Cooperation Program on Water. And it changed its name along the way, and not a long time ago, to Intergovernmental from International. And has been started as a different asset. It was called International Hydrological Decade in nineteen sixty-five, and evolved from experimental models to societal needs, from pure research to water management, and then to societal aspects and trying to do things in a holistic, system-wide way. Why presenting this? Because now we go back to the very old times and to understand if ecohydrology, how ecohydrology was coming into the scene. You see the different phases, you see the orange arrows. We are now in eighty-one and eighty-four. During the second and the third phase, projects, there were a lot of projects. They were not a strategy, but were experimental projects, like two hundreds for each phases in all different issues of water, all endeavors of water. And few of them attempted to consider studies concerning determination, prediction, influence of men's, using still this term at that time, activities on the hydrological regime, and interaction of this activity with the environment. And also, this attempted was, you know, in the eighties, there were a lot of waterworks, either dams or whatever, water abduction tunnels. So there was starting the idea of impact assessments on the environment. So this project were trying to set up some indices on impact assessments of waterworks mainly. So in nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-nine, there is a little shift in the way that the IHP, which is this international, by that time, hydrological program, meets with another UNESCO program, which is the Men and the Biosphere. And it's the ecology part of the science sector of UNESCO. And they were starting some collaboration, mostly on hydrology of particular land areas, wetlands, humid tropical areas, and so on and so forth. But let's try to go back a little bit and open a parenthesis on what MAB is. MAB is, as I said, is Men and Biosphere, and was launched in seventy-one, so more or less at the time when the IHP started. And as soon as this program started, it was very clear that aquatic ecosystems became the subject of a special project due to the important changes inflicted by human activities. So attention was beginning at the beginning on consequences of agricultural soil utrification, groundwater pollution, erosion, and so on and so forth. Then after fifteen years in nineteen seventeen, in nineteen, around the eighties, eighty-five, eighty-six, the project was framed after two important worship, one in France, in Toulouse, the other one in Hungary, in Sopron. And with the way to understand the impacts of land use on aquatic ecosystem. And one topic was crucial, and it was the study and the role played by ecotones. Ecotones are the interfaces, are the transition zones. Tonus means in Greek tension. So imagine the landscape divided in patches, and all patches have boundaries, those are the ecotones. This is the places where most ecological, hydrological processes are occurring. And those are the most vulnerable and also most interesting places to study where processes are changing. So there is this famous publication on MAB on the ecotones in nineteen eighty-nine. And during the preparation of this project, it was clear that hydrology had to be fully involved. And because of different hypotheses, one is sequence of flooding events affects the coupling of ecotones and adjacent ecosystem, and so on and so forth. So finally, the project launched by UNESCO in eighteen eighty became a MAB-IHP project based on cooperation of the two divisions of water sciences and ecological sciences. Now, there's another milestone during IHP III. It's an important publication. Sorry for the long writings, but the intention is also to write a paper on that. So many of ideas are there, but we try to go a little bit faster than. So there's a milestone publication, is the Regulation of River and Fish Community by Continuum of Abiotic/Biotic Factors. And this is a milestone because for the first time, the river system is taken as a reference point, and the hierarchy of abiotic/biotic drivers is changing along the river continuum. So it's a different asset. And this will lead a decade later, so in the ninety-five, ninety-six, to the understanding of the importance of hydrological processes and the biota structure interplay with hydrology. Going back to the IHP evolution, so in IHP IV, we are in the nineties, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-five, while the first three phases was mostly oriented to international cooperation in hydrological science, this fourth phase has a well-defined title, which is Hydrology and Water Resources for Sustainable Development in a Changing Environment. And this means a clearer approach to the changes that are ongoing on the environment, so thirty years ago. And there's a clear shift from pure research, research-based knowledge, to, so the understanding of the cycle, so availability of water in all forms. And then the shift is from pure research and how do we manage this? How do we manage this water? And IHP continued with MAB in some of the projects, in particularly the inland waterland ecotones in landscape management. What is interesting here, that in nineteen ninety-five, Russia proposed, for example, the establishment of a center on ecohydrology, but was never materialized. So the idea is, in the nineties, the idea is coming out. And as I said before, in nineteen ninety-six, the Ecohydrology Program entered into the plan of the former International Hydrological Program, now it's called Intergovernmental from two thousand nineteen. And during its fifth phase, named Hydrology and Water Resources Development in a Vulnerable Environment. See the orange arrow, we are almost in the middle, but anyway. And then, I'm not sure if it is true, but because we were discussing with Andreas this morning, that due to a change in priority, in nineteen ninety-five, MAB was not longer interested to continue with the ecotones and to fully support this project. But however, IHP with theme two, that was devoted to ecohydrological processes in superficial environments, was able to link with this ecotone project in new frameworks of two projects. So here there's a shift because many of the experts working for MAB, and for example, Professor Maches Alex is one of them, migrated from the idea to work with MAB and migrated to the IHP. So a new era is coming out. So we have a brain movement from a program to another. And also, this is the time that, for example, in these two projects, in two thousand, there is the journal that comes out. It's the Ecohydrology and Hydrobiology. So it's been over twenty-two years. I think the impact factor now is over three point from two or three point one. There are also important publications that show that the transdisciplinary character of ecohydrology, and also the idea of the enhancement of catchment system ability potential by this dual regulation of water-biota interplay. Of course, the theoretical model, this is the one we're talking about, on the abiotic/biotic regularity continuum concept. And finally, when we get to IHP VI in two thousand and two, there is also a shift in the general strategy and objectives of the program, that from water management, the program understands the importance of the social component, economic and environment. So water is no longer, is no longer, is no longer a scientific issue, but it becomes also a social, environmental, political issue. Anyway, this is the time that the dual regulation between these two phases, the fifth and Anyway, this is the time that the dual regulation between these two phases, the fifth and the sixth, taking place. And dual regulation was explained before, it would be explained, I think, moreover, and I go fast because apparently I don't have time. And here, in this particular phases, well, there is an important milestone, is the establishment in 2006 of the European Regional Center for Ecohydrology of the Polish Academy of Sciences, established under the auspices of UNESCO, of which also I have the great pleasure to be affiliated with. And there is a shift from the pure studies also to the application of solution of ecohydrology. That's why there are 10 demonstration sites establishing this different part of the work, and also integration of harmonization with infrastructure and nature-based solutions. So we're talking about nature-based solution in ecohydrology already more than 20 years Again, in a different phase, we go up on the time. In IHP VII, 2008, 13, ecohydrology has a dedicated team. We also have important educational program. One is the Erasmus Mundus course in ecohydrology, and we had more than 150, 120 students formed, and this is very important because those students that followed that course from Africa, from Latin America, they will then become actors of this program and propose centers, chairs, and also demonstration sites. So there are also important centers and chairs which are established during this period. One is the one in Portugal. We have the Asia-Pacific Center for Ecohydrology in Indonesia. We have two chairs, one in China, one at the former UNESCO IHE Institute. And also, starting with the concept of service delivered by the ecosystem. So talking about ecosystem services for society, for nature, and also increasing number of demonstration sites to demonstrate that solution applied are useful both for the human and nature. Then we get to the first phase of the program, which is a longer phase, 8 years, it's starting in 2014. It's a phase on water security. And here again, ecohydrology has a complete dedicated theme, it's theme five, it's called Engineering Harmony for a Sustainable World. It has five focal areas, and it works on the concept that is already mentioned many times, on the theory to regulate hydrological and nutrient cycles in novel ecosystems, the one that are coming from the Anthropocene, the, yeah, timeout, I'm sorry. Anyway, there are parameters like water resources, biodiversity, bioproductivity, ecosystem services for society, resilience, and culture and education. It means that water and bioproductivities, increasing this carrying capacity of this, will provide services for society, and the use of infrastructure with nature-based solution would also be the resilience to impacts such as climate change, for example. And nothing of this can be achieved without participation of the social, the communities' policymakers, and so on and so forth. Anyway, there are a few success stories of this program, due to a very strong scientific advisory committee, strong support from the ecohydrology family, UNESCO family of water centers and chairs, 18 top in all the continents. There's interactive tools, information technology also helping the dissemination of this because you can, there was a platform, everybody can go and see on the platform. There are training courses that organize online for free with certification. There are new technologies also, new tools like the innovative molecular tool based on DNA sequences, and also with the WWDR report from WAP, UNESCO, on nature-based solution. Ecohydrology has been using nature-based solution for decades, so also the importance of ecohydrology was taken on board more globally. The concept also, the paradigm between the sociocentric mechanistic to evolutionary ecosystemic taken on board by different policies in different countries, and also by the European Commission Committee for Regions, without considering also, of course, the water for all. Anyway, last phase, last words. The new program is, it's more holistic, is IHP IX, 2022, 2029, and it's not compartmented in silence, it attempts to have a more holistic approach. I don't talk more because time is out, and also because Elfitri will speak about this in detail. So thank you so much for your patience and attention for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Josep, for this excellent overview. And from Andras, we know what challenges we have, and from you, we know how UNESCO is going to tackle those kinds of problems. So are there any quick questions? Because we are a little beyond time at the moment, so. If not, I'm sure we'll have a debate during the break. So let's go to the next speaker, but it will be your role now.
Yeah, thank you very much indeed. Let us examine now what's going to happen in the coming 8 years. What are the strategic plans? And we have here Dr. Elfitri Rahman, who will give us this presentation on the future of ecohydrology in the coming 8 years. Please, what is yours?
Okay, good morning, everybody, ladies and gentlemen. Nice to meet you here in Poland. My name is Rahman Elfitri. I'm the new chief of section for capacity development and water family coordination in UNESCO. I'm very much new in UNESCO, just going to two months, like one month and a half, recently joined UNESCO. And previously, I was in Malaysia, 15 years working in Malaysia as professor and also researcher there in the National University of Malaysia. But of course, I worked on ecohydrology much, quite longer also, with Josep and Prozalewski, of course, Luis Cisaro, Pascal, and others, since 2010. So this was among my involvement in ecohydrology. And in fact, today is my first time present on behalf of UNESCO, because before this, I always present sharing my ecohydrology demonstration site in Malaysia, which is Putrajaya Lake and Wetlands. But today, I will share with all of you about ecohydrology in UNESCO. And yeah, so I'm not replacing, like, I know a lot of people in UNESCO call me the new Josep, because I took over his position on ecohydrology, water quality, and water education. So I hope I will inherit his wisdom also, and knowledge, and maybe the award next time from Polish academic science. Okay, so this is just a quick summary, because Josep also already shared with all of us about the previous IHP especially, but this one specifically on ecohydrology, which is started or introduced in UNESCO since 1996 during the IHP V, ecohydrology as a new paradigm for the sustainable use of aquatic resources. And in 2010, only the first time the ecohydrology demonstration site, or at the time, we call it ecohydrology demonstration project, was launched and called for proposal, submission for proposal from all countries. And at the time, we have about 32 demonstration projects, and it categorized as global reference project, operational project, evolving project, and also emerging projects. That was in the beginning. And then in 2015, when Josep initiated another, I mean, a new restructuring or revitalization of ecohydrology program, there is no longer categorization based on category, as the previous category for the type of demonstration project. Instead, the focus is more on the ecosystem base, which is based on the basin, inland wetlands, rivers or lakes, and also estuaries or coastal water. So that is the new framework introduced during that time. And until Josep retired, or by the end of 2021, the current list of ecohydrology demonstration site, as the total list, is 29 in 19 countries. So now, in the IHP IX, we plan to have more ecohydrology demonstration site, because this is not much as compared to many other ecohydrology projects or programs implemented in other countries. So this is our main agenda for the UNESCO IHP IX, actually. So, okay, as I think Abu has already presented, shared with us, in fact, Andras and all of us today already mentioned about the five priorities areas in UNESCO IHP IX. So for the first one, scientific research, and then water education, bringing data and knowledge, gap, IWM, and also water governance. So actually, this aspect will need ecohydrology implementation within these priority areas in terms of scientific research, in terms of water education, because we need ecohydrology also there. And for this working group that established for the priorities areas, we have also additional cross-sectoral group, which the first additional cross-sectoral group will be specifically focused on ecohydrology and water quality, which is currently under my section. And also, there is another additional cross-sectoral group, which is groundwater and also hydrological system and climate change. So as I mentioned, the five priority areas in UNESCO have specific needed and focus on ecohydrology implementation in each aspect, including research and for the data, related to data, and IWM implementation. Water education, of course, it is a transdisciplinary, transdisciplinary that involve in all aspects, whether it is ecohydrology or water quality. So as you seen here, ecohydrology and water quality is directly under my section, which is the important thematic groups under UNESCO IHP 8, sorry, IX, IHP IX. And water education as transdisciplinary approach will be involved or related to these two aspects, whether in ecohydrology or water quality, we need the water education for implementation of these two components. And I want to highlight also this UNESCO water family, because it is also directly under my section. And we have, of course, direct category two center on ecohydrology, and also UNESCO chair related to ecohydrology. As you seen there, for the category two center, we have actually almost in all region, at least, we have in Europe, which is Poland, Ethiopia in Africa, and Indonesia representing Asia-Pacific, and for Latin America, which is in Brazil and Paraguay. And some UNESCO water chairs directly on ecohydrology, which is in China, Portugal, Poland, and Tanzania. And in terms of number of water family, we have currently total 68 chairs and 29 centers. And not only this chair and center, but all water assessment program is also part of the water family, and also all IHP committees in all member states and others' program, flagship initiative, and also partner or expert, which is related to water around the world. So specifically, the program, ecohydrology program within the IHP IX will promote the integration of social, ecological, and hydrological research, and to generate outcomes that enable the development of effective policies and practices for IWM. And IHP will support a program related to research, of course, research networking, capacity building, or increasing the comprehension of the role, different types of ecosystem, and then related to sharing knowledge on the integration of ecohydrological technologies, and also developing catchment-scale ecohydrological early warning system, that is among the support. And for the specific program, we want, or we will develop and enhance more scientific research, so we will expect to publish more in journal or any book publication or brochure related to ecohydrology, which we will need collaboration with all of you, with UNESCO chair, UNESCO center, and all water family. And we have, we will also, the plan during the IHP IX will increase the promotion and also establishment of new ecohydrology demonstration site. As I mentioned just now, currently, we have only 29, we want more demonstration site. So currently, Nigeria, Tanzania, Madagascar, and Tunisia already expressed their interest that they want to have new demonstration site. So let's see the process, because there are some requirement needed and need to fulfill, and then evaluation by the committee. And so if this new demo site, or proposed demo site can, what do you call it, can achieve all the requirement, then maybe it will become a new demonstration site in the future. But of course, we encourage other countries or expert, or ecohydrology expert, or any interested parties to propose a new demonstration site. And within UNESCO, we will launch a call for submission new ecohydrology demonstration site letter shortly after this. And for further information about the ecohydrology demonstration site, the criteria or the requirement are available in this website, ecohydrology-ihp.org. And you can also see other demonstration sites, the other 29 demonstration sites in this website, which also with the specific ecohydrology demo site card, which we produce for each ecohydrology demo site. So all information is there. Another specific target for this IHP IX, we want to develop ecohydrology approach within UNESCO designated sites. So not only river or wetlands or lake or any other ecosystem, but if possible, we want to promote this approach to be implemented in the current UNESCO designated sites, which is their UNESCO Biosphere Reserve, UNESCO Water Heritage Site, or UNESCO Global Geopark, which currently, some of them may be facing issues related to water and environment. So we can introduce this ecohydrology demonstration, this ecohydrology approach, and encourage the implementation of this ecology to improve the current situation of water, environment, and community participation in this area. And possibly, they will become a new demonstration site. And if in the future, when they achieve this, another level of demonstration site, it means this site not only becoming, for example, global geopark, they are not only implementing global geopark, but at the same time, they're also conserving the water and environment in their designated site. So that is the main intention. There are many UNESCO designated sites in each country, so we can start to promote this initiative. And also, last but not least, the most important component activities that we will carry, we will conduct this year related to capacity building for improved water management. water management, there will be many trainings related to equidology, or workshop, or symposium like today, that we can improve or promote the equidology implementation at all level. And this is another unique program, committee, maybe, within our program, we have specific equidology scientific advisory committee, which other program don't have this kind of scientific advisory committee. So currently, we have this all name, Professor Zaleski is there as a chair, and some Professor Luis Cisarros is here as a vice chair, and we have also Pascal here as one of the member. In fact, myself, before this, I was one of the committee, core member of this subcommittee. At that time, I was still in university, National University of Malaysia. So this list was extended until end of two thousand twenty-one. So our plan is to, tomorrow, actually, we will have specific meeting for this, because some of us are here, and some member that they are not presented directly, we invited them to join online, to revise or restructure this committee, because this committee is very critical, because currently, the approval of new demo site only approved by scientific advisory committee. If the subcommittee is not there or no longer active, for example, or not valid, because not renew, I mean, not extended the appointment, so how can we approve the new demo site? Because so this one need to revise. And unfortunately, this is the current situation, also lack of gender, because before this, I was the only woman in this committee. We want, we need more women in this committee. And if possible, also to represent all region, because currently, mostly in Europe and two from Asia-Pacific, that's all. And previously, one from Latin America, but no longer join. And so, we need to also revise this P O R of subcommittee, and also the assessment or monitoring program, because how is the current procedure of submission? So these all, these all things, we will review tomorrow, probably during the submeeting. And I have also, just to share you a little, what call it, the analysis of the current sub from our consultant Jose Guana, because he just submitted his report. In fact, the weaknesses, for example, the weaknesses of this submember, because mostly based on the European institution, and then make a difficult for students not studying in Europe to be able to incur, to inquire this knowledge, and then focus on small problem solving. And also, that another trip, all members sub mostly academician, so not really represent all. Okay, so that's all, as a conclusion, of course, it is transdisciplinary sustainability sign, and we need to implement the integrated approach that promote by Professor Zaleski, which is W B S R plus cultural education for, to make sure equidology to achieve SDG goal. Thank you very much. Join, please join our network on equidology and thank you.
Thank you very much, Rahman. Is there any quick question? If none, then tonight, we will transform ourselves into the International Wine Program, and there will be plenty of opportunities to discuss this. We now move to the regional aspects, and our dear colleague, Shabazz Khan, Professor Khan will join us from the Beijing office that he directs. But he is a normal human being, he's a hydrologist, not just a director. Shabazz, are you there? Hi, Shabazz, welcome.
To hydrology and water security symposium. Thank you very much for inviting me to give you some ideas on equidology and nature-based solution, the concepts of dual regulation and integrated management, how they are emerging and being modified with new ideas. And I will be also giving some focus to China, which has done wonderful work in moving towards eco-civilization, which I will be introducing today. And there are some very interesting trends in restoration of ecosystems as well as enhancing not only just the functions from an eco point of view, but from eco services point of view. So as we know, the eco water values, where we have the ecosystems and ego water values, where we have the ego, human ego at the center. So like, industries have a right to pollute rivers, and unfortunately, in many countries, still this is a valid paradigm in Asia and in other parts of the world. Dams add value to rivers, so those are still maybe some of the ideas. We can build walls to contain floods to any levels, and urban waterscapes are not desirable, they're like swamps, how do we get rid of them? Indigenous communities have no water rights and water policies should be set by experts. So still, there are issues in Asia-Pacific on ego water values, but I'm very pleased to also note and give these ideas that the world is moving, Asia-Pacific is moving towards eco water values. Water pollution is illegal and immoral, some dams should be removed and new dams should be avoided. So this is part of the national legislation in many countries. For example, in Australia, with the national water plans and with the Murray-Dalling Basin plans, urban waterscapes connect water, connect people, connect businesses. Indigenous communities should control their traditional waters, and all stakeholders should jointly decide on water policy. So role of local indigenous knowledge, the ideas linked with ecosystems are becoming more and more well-accepted as part of integrated water resource management. Rivers and ecosystems have water rights, we need participatory approaches. So equidology is at the center of it, and that's where SDGs, SDG six and water security, and the role of international environmental law, they are key towards achieving the SDGs and SDG number six on water security. So philosophically, what, how and why we can do things together? So I'm sure we have been working on the ideas of bringing the triple bottom line, society, environment and economy, but now, how do we bring the politics and culture together? So by bringing the triple bottom line, we have been looking into what we call the ecologically sustainable development. But now, with politics and culture, we are looking into ecological civilization. This is the paradigm, President Xi Jinping has given as a key paradigm for China, and let me highlight some of it, and there are some interesting results which are coming through. Going back to the traditional wisdom and eco traditions, like Confucianism, Taoism, Buddhism, so in these very important traditional wisdom, unity of nature and human, and how humans have been modeled to the nature, all living things are equal, they're very much aligned with the equidology and nature-based solutions. Ecological interpretation of Marxism has also put a very important relationship between man and nature, and harmonious development of nature, human and society. And also, there is a need for bringing the domestic and global practices together. We need to get rid of some of the old paradigms, as pollute versus treat later, to consider environmental problems as part of the sustainable development, and how can we learn from our past and do better with nature-based solutions, equidology, water security, how this can be integrated together? As I highlighted before, this eco-civilization as a new paradigm, so here is an example phrase from President Xi Jinping, lucid waters and lush mountains are invaluable assets. So linking mountains and the waters already gives you an idea of the whole of the catchment approach, that's where ecology is considered as type of assets. Ecology is changing, and we need to bring natural capital and economic development together. So this is the idea. Here you see one of the Sai Hanba National Forest Park, China, the largest man-made woodland, giving an excellent example of how we can bring vegetation and water and the dual regulation together. So also, very importantly, how we continue to go on commercial industrial development, moving from commercial industrial civilization, where the tensions between economic development and human ecological sustainability are so high, towards ecological civilization, focusing on protection, focusing on development, focusing on transforming, without changing the current path of the development, but looking into what can be better way forward with the lesser pollution and lesser footprints. So of course, the policy is the steering wheel, the ecological civilization, which I have introduced, and how do we bring technologies like the smarter monitoring and understanding the water cycle, and linking with the different functions of the ecosystems and ecosystem services, and how to bring education and culture together? So from steering wheel to engine to vision, working together to change society, to create water security. China has successfully experimented since two thousand and seven with River Chief System. RCS was introduced in Wuxi City in two thousand and seven, so only about fifteen years ago, where sinobacterial pollution was very, very high. So if you remember also, some of the presentations given by Professor Zaleski about Ouch, there is interesting learnings here as well. So as a pilot for ten years, it has been trialed in different cities, and it has been launched about five years ago nationwide, and River Chief System is really working well, and I will show you an example. And this is really the new paradigm coming from Asia with the traditional wisdom and the governance systems which are coming. So along the different branches of our river system, we can make people responsible and accountable, so with a system of sticks and carrots, linking the people and actors at different levels, from the level of the counties, township, cities, all the way to the level of the province and different levels of the government, also bringing different aspects of water management, environment, looking also into water security for cities, looking into management of groundwater, surface water, and how this whole system can work together, but with better data, which can be provided through technologies. So how do we continue to have trans jurisdictional coordination on nature resolution and equidology, and how these different actors at different levels of the rivers and the catchments can work together and coordinating the work all the way from lower level to the higher level with clear responsibilities, differentiated responsibilities? So basically, defining the property rights for pollution and making sure the polluter pays principle is applied by penalizing those counties or those areas which have high levels of pollution and rewarding those who are doing the right thing. And that's where, very important, another Asian paradigm is nine dragons managing the river system. How do we do assessment and accountability, and how water bodies can work together under a pyramid of this ecological civilization and River Chief System? So here is an example of a lake, I have personally visited, and this is now part of the equidology demonstration projects. It's twenty-eight kilometer west of the Guiyang City in the Guizhou Province, so you can see the location, it's in south of China. It's a very big area, fifty-seven point two square kilometers with a depth of more than ten meters. On the average is ten meter, maximum forty-five meters, it holds a lot of water. So in terms of the millions of more than six hundred million meter cubes, it has a number of rivers flowing into it, and you can now imagine the River Chief System working along the rivers and in the lake, and it is serving a population of three million people for their hydropower, for flood control, for water supply, for recreation and many commercial uses as well. There is a big body of knowledge which is available here, and I'm very pleased to note that there are papers which are discussing dual regulation, eco biotechnologies, phyto technologies, environmental flows, water security and water supply. So there are more than five hundred papers, more than four hundred are in national and local journals, and there are seventy-five international journal papers. So I think this need to be taken to the next level from a management point of view. So before, this lake was with a lot of development on its banks with many, many polluting the residential and industrial development, and you can see here, all of this has been removed, a clear ecotone has been farmed, and over a very short period of time, the water quality in the lake has been improved, there is a big recreational and educational use. So in this picture, at the lake itself, there is no illegal fishing which is allowed, and also making sure the ecological assets, the birds and the fish, they are being protected in the best possible way. The leadership is at the level of the city mayor, so here is Mayor Wong, who is taking care, also the private sector is establishing with UNESCO an education center, several stakeholders, including the municipal government, including the real estate, including the key state laboratories, and the universities, as well as the research centers from the Chinese Academy of Sciences working with UNESCO, to make it as a best practice and also a key demonstration of equidology, nature-based solutions with ecological civilization. So this is now a demonstration site, it has the scientific basis, we are working on the baseline data, and with the educational facilities, we can go all the way from the high-level policy to making sure things are working, and with the education programs linked with the universities and the research, which continues to improve, and the value of waterscapes has improved so much the value of the property there. With that, I thank you, thank you for inviting me again. I look forward to learning more about the conference and look forward to hearing from the wisdom of the pillars of ISP, the key professors who are here. Thank you, have a wonderful conference.
Thank you so much, Shabazz. Thank you. We will miss you tonight, but certainly, we'll share the recommendations of this meeting.
Thank you very much. I should switch another presenter, but I'm unsure whether we have already connection with Professor Lee. Do we have a connection? So it seems we need to skip this for a while, and let's move to another speaker, Professor Mario Mendionco, from Water Resources Engineering, Sao Carlos School of Engineering of the University of Sao Paulo in Brazil. I understand we have, we don't have the connection with him as well?
Are you seeing me? Good morning?
We have, we have the connection, that's fantastic. We do see you, I understand it's a very early morning in Brazil, we are more advanced, so please.
Okay, so I, are you hearing me? Okay?
We are, please go ahead.
I am sharing my, I am sharing my presentation, are you seeing my presentation okay?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there is one echo in the background, perhaps there is a microphone open. Okay, so thank you for this invitation. I would like to congratulate Professor Zaleski, Professor Power, also the staff for the organization of this event, and also the UNESCO family here. My presentation is related to equidology for water security in the global south through cooperative solutions for transboundary challenges. So I put together a group of early career scientists, and also a balanced group with half of women and half of men, coming from the global south and part of the qualcos, also working in countries like Colombia and Germany and United States, mostly of them coming from Brazil. So we are representing the University of Sao Paulo by myself, the Center of Educational Research on Disasters. the Center of Educational Research on Disasters and the UNESCO Chair on Urban Water, Quality Management and Recovery and Reuse. And also the Pantarai Initiative Worldwide. Everything flows about the co-evolutionary aspect about science and education. So my introduction is related to the UNESCO IHP phase, the new phase, running incorporates the eco hydrological science for water security in a changing environment. But the impact of COVID pandemic and recently food insecurity both accelerate the usability of eco hydrological natural-based solutions as cooperative as transboundary. So I would like to point here one concept paper conferred by Professor Powers, that was Cevix, Stefano Passi and Professor Zalewski on how to use eco hydrological natural-based solutions in water quality management. So the point is, how can we scale these eco hydrological natural-based solutions? So this is one picture of an urban park here in São Paulo city, in the countryside of São Paulo state in Brazil. As an inspiration for the objective is to share recent interdisciplinary examples of these natural-based solutions linked to, as Professor Zalewski mentioned before, the main goal of Water Biodiversity Ecosystem Services for Society, Resilience to Climate Change and the Cultural Heritage. So other... Sorry, there is one alarm here. So there is another concept paper for long course natural-based solutions for managing aquatic resources and the integrating principles of eco hydrology related to circular economy, that is also open access. Mostly, my message is that the main driver of this adaptation should be through education and science. So here is a timeline, the pandemic, the COVID pandemic in Brazil. We promoted open science, Pantarai Open Science for a future Earth, envisioning a post-pandemic resilient society. And also with several campaigns for popularization of science, one drop of science, one dose of resilience through the UNESCO chair. Also, working with a group of early career scientists here, this is part of the lab, working in the field before and after the COVID. Also making citizen science as part of the bank connection for the popularization of science with eco hydrology. So the aspect on the message is how can we introduce the cooperative eco hydrological natural-based solutions into these goals of water biodiversity ecosystem services for society, resilience to climate change and cultural heritage? So the aspect we put here is the concept of steam, science, technology, engineering, arts, arts and math. So with different aspects of gaming, serious games, also with the vulnerable community. Some examples I would like to share with you, coming from the global south, most of them coming from Brazil. One of them is the circular framework with feedbacks, scales and stakeholders. We see here the stepwise aspect of ecosystem assessment, ecosystem sustainability, ecosystem resilience. Also, we can couple different models of risk backing analysis or from IPCC, water footprint or even ecosystem-based adaptation. Here, different colors means different environments which acknowledge to different interdisciplinary groups from early career scientists. So the flexibility to adapt to different approaches is crucial and the high recrescency on feedback loops in order to introduce these different special temporal scales and among different stakeholders. Here, for this example, we have the different ecosystem services, the payment for ecosystem services project we have running in Brazil, mainly in the Atlantic rainforest, related to the river pulse patterns in biomes, flood rating curves, flow duration curves and stakeholders' risk aversion. We are also, this is also published. Another example coming is also to be adapted for different places is a multi-stage disaster risk reduction, the management in order to introduce the risk aversion framework and the willingness to adapt ability under non-stationarity to stationarity conditions. So the gap we have between non-stationary to stationary curves is as we define as the willingness to adapt for our society. Also, this is a published work to be shared and to be adapted. And also in the right part, we see the students making the analysis of feelings, scenarios in a normal river, urban river. Another example, the ecosystem-based evaluation, evaluation using water footprint. We are decomposing for different catchments, different sizes in order to have a simple approach to be adapted to different river basin committees. Also, that could be adapted to South American, Latin American countries, African countries and Asian countries, also published. So here, we introduce valuation methods, the conservation effects and the restoration impacts. And we can value that in order to have a support for decision-making. So the second question is how can we communicate these eco hydrological natural-based solutions as cooperative as transboundary? So here is a very nice picture from the Atlantic rainforest. This is San Bento de Sapucaí in the São Paulo state, Brazil. Also looking for pristine conditions in order to have restoration projects, feasible restoration projects. And this example, this is a restoration project, this is running, introducing water quality scenarios of ecosystem-based adaptation. Here, I make a specific comment from the modelled water field and liters per second per square kilometers. Here is the fraction of the river basin being covered by forest, mixed covers. And here we have three scenarios, the cane, this normally is secured in the textbooks as the more fraction of forest we have in the river basin, we have more river transpiration. And of course, the water yields is declined. Also, we have a treasure here after introduction of some exotic culture or vegetation like the penis. But here, we have a green line, that is increasing the water yield with increasing of the fraction of the forest. And that is not a paradox, but this is an offset. Because when we convert these exotic forest into native forest, we have a gap in terms of variable transpiration that is a trade-off for the system. That's also very important, coming from hydrological science, this is science evidence, scientific evidence, and also to be adapted for different nested catchment scales ranging from ten square kilometers to one thousand square kilometers, running just in South America. So the water cycle changes, the eco-physiological patterns, the scaling problems and the scenario criteria and assessment coupled with field observations are crucial here. Other examples in smaller scales in urban catchments is bio-retention systems for sustainable stormwater management, also from street scale, for the lot scale or even for the sub basin. Other examples related to the online in-sea to water quality monitoring, we have a very good review and state of the art of in terms of physically based methods. The sensors and technology increasing during the last ten years and the empirical evidence that we can adapt in the labs test with calibration and validation. Digital twins is an increasing, an emerging area related to eco hydrology. That is, we have a high promising in this area, also related to citizen data and entities and a flexible topology of problems. So the third question is how can we, how can this eco hydrological natural-based solution reimagine? Help us to reimagine habitats, restore landscapes and recreate, why not, the job market for vulnerable communities? This is one example introducing, covering the climate change outputs with hydrological models, introducing low impact development, LID here, and comparing these scenarios with and without a low impact development in terms of the production of the peak of rainfall, the stream flows or even pollutant yields in catchment. So connected with citizen science evidence, flood observations and historical and future changes. One of the last slides I am going to introduce is about optimization. So all the things we can optimize in a decision-making, real-time approach for different catchments using different digital combinations. So the real-time control, the smart, for instance, urban drainage systems, the control theory, the model predictive control and some rule-based control could be acknowledged here. So last but not least, some example related to insurance. So here we are introducing eco hydrology natural-based solutions with insurance mechanisms like risk transfer mechanisms coupled with climate change and idea of how is the cost for a water utility company to maintain a long-term solvency for a mega city like São Paulo, Rio de Janeiro, Bogotá, Buenos Aires, Santiago, for instance. The stormwater reuse is an evidence increasingly in the global south. And here we can see us increasing the rainwater harvesting. We can have the decision-making for not building new dams in order to store water and also to make a decentralization. So a summary of this evidence as a final remarks is that with the augmenting inequality in the global south, these feasible eco hydrological natural-based solutions can be adapted at low-cost layouts by participatory schemes and serious gains, also with education in the classes and to thrive circular economy, a zero net transition and of course peace around the agenda two thousand thirty. So the signboard on the right is in Portuguese. I take it in visiting the beach in Brazil that say, people do not pollute, please but evolve. So thank you very much, I have very open questions. And of course, I wish you a very wonderful and fruitful conference and soon possible. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Are there any questions, brief questions from the audience? We are a little beyond time. There are no questions from here, so it's a very pity you are not with us. We cannot meet over dinner, for example. We had a very interesting lesson and then we can learn a lot of lessons from this fantastic session. I would say in a few words that no matter where we are, Brazil, China, Europe, we face huge challenges and then most of them are related to the situation that we have. Maybe we already surpassed some tipping points in terms of climate or we are close to it. So it causes huge challenges for us. And I feel that important message is that we have a huge knowledge gained and that we know a lot, how to solve different problems. And the main challenge is to bridge various worlds. I mean, the world of science, the world of decision-makers and also of the society. And this is probably the challenge for all of us for the nearest future, how to work out this good communication between those to some extent separate worlds. And it also seems that nature-based solutions is something that is a remedium for many, many problems that we face over the world.
Well, I think one of the lessons I learned at least from this session is that we are in the middle of a paradigm change. Yet another principal paradigm is changing. Forty years back, the goal was human development and environment was considered as a constraint in all our optimization models. But where we are now is environmental sustainability became an objective itself, not as a constraint. And that's totally different, that requires a different approach. I think the other lesson what I learned from this session is that perhaps we ought to combine our forces in a bit more organized fashion, the intergovernmental part, IHP as an example, but the non-governmental parts such as the Sustainable Water Future Program, which is a part of the Future Earth, that's a huge X program dealing with water or the Water For All program. So I see a lot of opportunity for convergence and not just formally, but really bringing together joint working parties. For all my sins now, I'm leading the Sustainable Water Future Program and we already started to have a discussion with the IHP secretary to combine forces. But here comes a problem. We don't want, I'm sorry to say that, because I knew that when we were serving as humble servants for this sentence, I would have been fired immediately from UNESCO service. We don't want to have science subject to government approval. So we would not like to have it under an intergovernmental council where half of the people are scientists, the other half are government bureaucrats. And that's the problem. And this is the problem that has always been hanging around with IHP. And people are asking the question, why is IHP so strong? Because governments are there. At the same time, if they are asking the question, why is IHP weak? Because governments are there. Sometimes they act as a low-pass filter. Governments are very conservative by definition. They don't encourage new ideas, they don't encourage new approaches, yet they have the sources. And the strength of IHP, and this perhaps could also be seen in the hydroecology program, is that it combines the academic community, more academic communities are there. But as the paradigm changes slowly... Even born when the IHP, at the time it was called the International Hydrological Decade in nineteen sixty-four, started with a major program stations, all of them, there were hundreds of them. And governments pumped in money in order to understand the workings of the hydrological cycle. And basically that gave rise to hydrology as a... It's basically an empirical stuff, you know, analysis of that. Then all these new days, it was an in-depth understanding on how the cycle is functioning. And then nothing came of the no PhD dissertation, it was considered serious, about two hundred hyperbolic partial differential equation. But the measurements disappeared. So when I did my PhD, I was number crunching and not measuring anything. Go back and reestablish this. A network of hydro... Create a network of hydroecological experimental basins where the elements are concurrently measured on a database and joint models could be I'm going to finish anyway. Joint models could be developed for the benefit of governments. So they can play with, you know, forty years back, if you but now changed. Because they are, the way of scenario assessment and scenario analysis, what will happen if is deeply enshrined in the brains of government policymaking. They have no other options. So perhaps they have to take and combine hydrology and ecology into a joint approach. And as the hydrologists say, hydrology.
So I think we should finish this session and then give you a chance for a coffee break. I understand now. Okay, then we have like fifteen minutes break.